Okay, hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall, I am the Lower Paxton Township Manager. And in typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. So this evening, the Board has a fairly comprehensive agenda. We have a number of items. This is a business session of the Board. And following under new business of the agenda, if I can get to that, the Board will take action on a number of items to include action to appoint Mr. Miller and Mr. Wasser to the Greenway Committee. Action on bids for the emergency repairs and the, for the wastewater and stormwater system contract. Following that, the Board will take action to approve amendment number one to the ICA, this being with regard to the township's agreement with CRW and the other municipal partners for our sewer transmission system. After that, the Board will take action to approve application for payment number nine relating to the 2020 Township Drainage Improvements Project. Following that, the Board will take action to approve application for payment number two, being for the Forest Hills Parks Improvement Project. Following that, finally, under new business, the Board will take action to adopt ordinance 2023-07 pertaining, actually authorizing the establishment and the adoption of the, of a trust fund for the township employees' post-retirement benefits relating to post-retirement healthcare benefits under our collective bargaining agreements. Following that, finally, under subdivision and land development items, the Board will take action to approve a preliminary and final land development plan for F&amp;M Trust Bank at 4775 Linglestown Road. Take action to pay the authority and township bills. And then finally, hear any last announcements before finally making motion to adjourn. With all that said, members of the Board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gottschall. We'll call this meeting of the Lower Paxton Board as Supervisors to Order. Like to ask everyone to please stand, and Supervisor Lindsey will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now move to approval of minutes, this for the September 12, 2023 Budget Workshop and the September 19, 2023 Budget Workshop and Business Meetings. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved, is there a second?
A second.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. This is the time set aside for public comment. Public comment is for items that are not on the agenda tonight. If you are here to speak to an item that's on the agenda, we'll be, time for public comment on that item at that time. So if you are here to speak to an item that is not on the agenda, we'd like to ask you to come to the podium, please give us your name and address. And we do ask that comments be kept to five minutes or less, if at all possible. So would anybody like to address the Board on an item not on the, please come to the podium, ma'am, and give us your name and address. Okay, it's hard to see you. Thank you.
My name is Susan Shabowski. I live at 4333 Outer Bridge Crossing. Good evening.
Good evening. Ah, you have props.
This 19-inch by 23-inch 32-gallon toter is why I and many others in this room are It's for trash. This is our average weekly trash size. We understand that the township signed a five-year contract with Penn Waste. And we appreciate that the township recognized the need for smaller totes for some of the residents. However, the current 96-gallon and 65-gallon toters are difficult to move for the physically handicapped, the older residents, and those with other physical limitations. Keep in mind, this is 32 gallons. We also appreciate the option of personalized service for those who qualify. However, many driveways are not level, and the carts cannot be perched outside the garage for the drivers to get out and take the toters down to the truck. 32-gallon toters will solve the storage problem for many residents with two cars, as often cars need to be moved to take the toters in and out. Also, more cars are now parked outside in driveways and on streets, which will create other problems during winter weather. Some individuals passed on having two carts, and as a result, recycle materials are now co-mingled with trash, defeating the purpose of recycling. We also appreciate that the township recognized that there are strict rules in many HOAs. And you addressed this issue up front several months ago, and I quote, "The township has a representative working with HOA groups regarding the carts and how residents can store them. We ask for your patience as we start implementing the new service." I think that came out in June or July. All the HOA groups represented here this evening are in fact still patiently waiting to be contacted. So we would please ask that you make the name and the contact information of this person available to us tonight, so that our management company representatives can reach out to them and start this process. May I ask the name?
Yeah, two things. Mr. Gottschall, would you like to give her the name and email for the person who handles that for us?
Yeah, sure. So our public engagement specialist, Michelle Thompson, M. Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N, she's Thompson, yes, at lowerpaxton-pa.gov. And she has indeed made contact several times, even months prior to the Board's finalized contracts with Penn Waste to start to prepare HOAs for this eventuality. And she continues to work with HOA management companies, as well as representatives from various HOAs to address various concerns, of which the tote is on that list. But, but Michelle Thompson is the one that, that has been appointed in that capacity.
Maybe it's our misfortune that our three to five HOAs in our area, no one has heard from Michelle Thompson as of this date.
Sure.
But we'll reach out to her, thank you.
Now, let me specifically address the smaller tote, which is probably your main concern. You make a lot of very good points. And it is the position of the Board, as you may know, we are still in the process of switching out some of the 96-gallon totes for the smaller ones. That will hopefully be completed over the next few weeks. And the plan has been to, you know, there's been a lot of changes in the last six months, and that, you know, triggered a lot of confusion. So we were reluctant to add even more changes on top of that until we got everything else in place. So once all these, once all the 96-gallon totes have been replaced by the, what is it, 76?
65.
65-gallon totes for everybody who has requested them. And also, you know, we had to stand up an entire new office to do billing, because as you may know, the township has taken the billing. Penn Waste was going to charge $30 per bill, per quarter, for processing the bill. And our new department that we have handling that will only, will be able to do it for $5 per, so we're going to save everybody about $100 a year by doing that. That's almost complete, bills I think are about ready to go out. So, once we complete those two things, then our plan is to make the necessary adjustments with the Penn Waste contract, and then try to find out how many people will want the smaller containers, and then the township will order the smaller containers and switch out to the smaller containers. Now, that's probably going to take a couple more months to get done, but the plan is to do exactly what it is you're requesting. Does that help at all?
No.
What's that?
So your intent, just to be clear, is to also offer a third option, which is a 32-gallon tote?
Yes.
35, 35.
Yeah, yes.
Ours are 35. I don't know where you got the 32, but ours are 35.
Well, that's what's written on my container, so.
Well.
But that's here, neither here nor there, as long as they're about this size, that's, that would be great.
The plan is to offer a third and smaller size, yes.
Okay.
But, like I said, with all the changes that are going on, we needed to work our way through all the other changes first, and then offer that, because it was about 11%, 12% asked for the containers that were smaller than the 96. So we're figuring that we'll probably only have a couple percent of the folks who are going to actually want a smaller container, so it's a fairly small number. But once we can ascertain what that number is, then we can order them. But yes, the, the plan is to make a third size, smaller size available, yes.
So I hope you're not cutting into my five minutes, are you?
No, you may take, you may take, you may take whatever time you like, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, real quick question for you. In relation to the HOAs you, you've noted, could you note to me who, the, the names of the HOAs that have not been contacted yet?
Yeah, do you mind if I do that afterwards?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, the reason that I'm going to continue here is that we in fact, many of us had these totes, we were using them with the previous trash hauler, because they fit in our, our garages. And when the new hauler came along and we approached them, they said, "No problem," and they've been emptying them. Until three weeks ago, when that orange notice started getting slapped on containers, and that notice reads, "Must use township-issued toter, no longer taking personal cans/toters per the township." So, I recognize that you've asked for our patience, and I'm asking you for your patience, because some of us, including my home, we still have the 95-gallon container that's stashed under our deck, because we're not allowed to have it visible. And now, suddenly, three weeks ago, we were told that they're going to drive past our home, because we are using this container. And so, I'm asking that, why do we have to impose this penalty at this point in the process, if it is still an evolving process, which I certainly appreciate?
Well, part of the issue is, you know, we, we cannot have, we cannot have everybody using whatever container they want, you know, because there are 16,000 customers in the township. That would create chaos, and our contract is for them to pick up the two larger sizes. So, you know, again, we're going to offer a third one, but you're going to need to be patient until we can get that done. So please take yes for an answer.
Is that a contractual problem, Brad? If, if it's not, if these aren't spelled out?
Well, I just, this is a discussion that had come up with Penn Waste earlier on in the contract discussions, and has continued through the process. The biggest thing from Penn Waste's perspective is the legal liability. With the township carts that are provided on the contract, if they're damaged in any manner during the process, they're replaced at no charge, swapped out for the same exact can. They run into a problem from a corporate legal liability standpoint, which sometimes gets a difference between the individual driver, who's worried about just servicing the units and getting home, versus the corporate perspective of the liability, that if they damage, break, unfortunately, if the arm drops your can, and they take it with them, and it's gone forever, there's that issue of liability to you for your personal property versus township property. That's the biggest thing by the contract. And once corporate Penn Waste was aware of what some of the drivers were doing, some of the policies were re-discussed, and that's why there was a point where those stickers started to come out.
So when they say, and we're not taking your time, but when they say "per the township", it's really a contractual, because a lot of people, they make, they're very careful to put that on these tags, I'm learning. It's "per the township," as if we have the authority. But it sounds more contractual. Okay, I know that may not mean a lot, but when I see that, and I've seen a few of them, it, it sounds like it's not being really 100% straight with you.
I, I reached out to Penn Waste, as you might imagine, and basically, I was told that it was a township decision and not a Penn Waste requirement. And so, in the fact that these conform to the mechanical arm, and they can be efficiently and effectively used, and they have been used for weeks, it just seemed, you know, obvious to me that somebody picked a date and said, "Okay, no more Mr. Nice Guy, we're now outlawing all of these," when we haven't even rolled out the process yet. So there's been this grace period for some period of time, these last few weeks, and I'm asking, why couldn't it continue? Because there's been a contract in place, but there's still, they've been doing it. So why can't we be doing this for the people that have them until everything gets ironed out?
We just answered that question.
I understand, but I'm on television, and I want everybody to know what, how I feel about it. So, thank you very much.
We do have tens of tens of viewers, so.
Yeah, and just so you know.
We're going to get to what you want.
Yep.
We are going to get to what.
And just so you know, if I can, I just, and you probably haven't been privy to it, but people have been bringing this up. We've been working through this for a while now. So this isn't something that we've been hearing people raise their concerns, and we're just blowing it off. It's, you may not have watched the meetings, and that's okay, but we've been having these discussions and trying to make this thing happen, simultaneously taking care of the 17,000 other households. And now, we're, we're getting close.
And ma'am, I'm sorry to call you back, could I get those HOA names?
Can I come over and see you privately? I'll write them down for you. I don't want to.
Okay, okay. Perfectly fine, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I remember when I was a kid, I was sitting there thinking, "When I grow up, I want to be a trash expert." And here I am.
And here you are.
You know, you, you guys, I've learned more from listening to what you had to say than I heard from the Penn Waste representative. I remember asking the Penn Waste representative early on about the size of the containers. At that time, I didn't even know there were, what they were. And he said, "90% of your people will decide that they want to keep the bigger one." Well, that, I think that's true, right?
And I think it's true, too. I think it's true, yeah.
Just, just to throw this out there, I mean, because I mean, it seems like Penn Waste is throwing us in the middle. Now, the, the thing is, I don't know who you talked to, could have just been, you know, an administrative assistant who really didn't, didn't know anything, but I think it's worth going back to them and saying, you know, what if we, what if these individuals came forward and, and signed a waiver, you know, saying, and I'm not a legal expert, I'm not an attorney, but if they signed a waiver saying that they weren't, you know, they wouldn't hold Penn Waste liable for damage to their, to their property, I'm sure that these people would do that. I, because I think we all understand that the issue is going to, you know, it's the winter time, and you're, you're having issues with getting down your driveway and a lot of other stuff. So, you know, is that something that can, we could, we could at least ask them if they would do that? You know, please be aware, they may say no, because we can't ensure that everybody that, that has a garbage can, you know, has signed a waiver. The paperwork, you know, may be a little too much for them to handle, but I think that it's something we can ask, you know.
I mean, I can see the cans now in my neighborhood, as they're being picked up and flopped down. Sometimes the wheels are falling off, so, you know, like, we don't want to be responsible for your can. You know, if it's our can and that happens, we can replace it, but I, I don't know if I'm in favor of doing that waiver.
Well, maybe, maybe not.
I mean, we have 17,000 customers, you know, so.
Okay, does anybody else wish to address the Board on, hopefully we've answered this issue, but anybody else want to address the Board, sir? Please, give us your name and address.
Hello, my name is Kalim Bharti, and until just several months ago, I was a resident of Lower Paxton Township, but now currently in Hummels Town, which is 105 Willow Creek Lane. And let me begin my address to this honored council with the beginning of saying Assalamu Aleikum, which Muslims and guests alike might recognize as greetings of peace be to all of you. And I'm here, as, as I mentioned, for nearly 50 years in central Pennsylvania. In 1981, I was here, and ever since, until about seven months ago, graduated from Central Dolphin High School. So I'm a lifelong member of the, of the, of the community. And the reason I am here today is to express my concerns, the feelings that I'm having with the world situation that we are seeing in, in the world today, particularly in the Middle East with Palestine and, and the Israel crisis. And, and, and just, like I said, I, I've been here so many years in my life, and this is the first time I've felt this terrible about the crisis, the unnecessary loss of life, innocent children, innocent women, elderly being killed in such a way. But let me go back even some more. Let me firstly strongly condemn the actions of Hamas on October 7th. That was totally wrong. Their depraved acts were wrong. They caused great harm, and are not in line with the true teachings of Islam. And I am a member of the Ahmadiya Muslim Community in central Pennsylvania, who is a sect of Islam, the founding, is, is a very active sect of Islam, the newest sect of Islam. Whereas the founder of Islam, the Holy Prophet Muhammad, on peace be upon him, peace and blessings of Allah be upon him, he forbade the killing of innocent civilians. He forbade the killing of innocent women, children, or anyone not engaged in any act of war or fighting. So, with the, the heinous acts of Hamas on October 7th, I extend my condolences and sympathies to my Israeli and Jewish brothers and sisters, whose teachings support those from the Holy Quran, that says that killing one person is the same as killing all of mankind, all of humanity. And, as the Jewish and Muslims say, if you give life to one person, it is the same as giving life to all of mankind. So I extend my sympathies to our Muslim, to our Jewish friends and sisters for those heinous acts. But, on October 7th, or since October 7th, the Israeli government has bombed Gaza and killed thousands and thousands of innocent civilians. And now, the numbers are nearly 10 times, 10 times, 10 times those lost in Israel. And it is repeatedly confirmed in the news that a large number of these deaths are of children. This is so very wrong, and the innocent who are not engaged in war are not at fault at all. And the argument I get is, oh, they voted for the Hamas as their, as their government. But again, there are innocent civilians. So if the world considers Israeli women, children, and ordinary citizens to be innocent, then Palestinians are also just as innocent.
Sir, can I ask you, what, what are, what are we supposed to be doing? Why are you bringing this to us?
Basically, it's, it's just a, it's a plea to, to seek prayers from the community, to help them understand the community, and as you alluded to, I'm on television, no, I'm just kidding. It's such a serious matter, I just want to be heard, that as a Muslim community here in the United States in central Pennsylvania, that we would like for everyone to pray for peace, because if this continues, this could easily turn into a region, not only a regional situation, regional conflict, but also a, a global world war that we are not safe from. And I'm, I'll take 30 more seconds, I'm almost done, if that answers your question. So, it, it seems the Palestinians in the Middle East are, are suffering terribly, unable to, the children are in shock, they're unable to cry, there's grieving mothers and fathers, it's just too much for me, as a human being, to witness. And it seems increasingly, increasingly clear that the major powers of the world are bent on fanning the flames of war rather than putting them out. Because we have the power. But anyway, the average person cannot fathom the harmful consequences of the war that would result from these injustices, and we must not let this happen. And I ask you, as the Board, maybe you have some power with our congressmen, that they may listen to you, to help enact a ceasefire, and to have, to have a lasting peace as a result of this ceasefire. And we, in the Muslim community, we live by the phrase, "Love for all, hatred for none." So the sights of mothers cradling their bodies of their lifeless children, embracing them for the very last time, just crushes my heart. Our children, our children, your children, are so fortunate here, that it, it urges me to give, my little one, when I tuck him in at night, I give him an extra hug and a kiss, as I prepare for him to, to have that challenging day of school the next day. And these are the things we all take for granted, and I would just appreciate that you help me in praying that God, that God enable the major world powers to establish justice and peace on both sides of this conflict, and establish a, a, a life that, that we all deserve to be living. all deserve to be living, to be allowed to.
Thank you. We're gonna need, we have a long, I understand your concern. I appreciate your taking time to be here. But if we can move on to the next, that would be very helpful.
One last sentence, prayer is the only weapon we have. And I thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Would anybody else like to address the board on an item not on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
Please give us your name and address, ma'am.
Cynthia Sell, 4325 North Victoria Way. I want to say I prayer, pray every day for peace, but I want to return to a more mundane problem, the trash cans.
Okay.
One thing that upset me from the beginning is that by not contacting the HOA that I belong to, I went out and bought two new trash cans. Because my HOA, we live in a very windy spot. My HOA asked us to please get trash cans with attached lids. So I did that. And then I find out that I can't use them. I still kept them because I was hoping at some point I could use them again. So I got the 95 gallon trash can. You can see what my height is. The lid was about this level on me. I have a very bad shoulder. Thank God, I have a good neighbor. He would take that, those trash cans down to the curb for me. But I hate to rely on a neighbor every Friday. So I got the smaller one, 65 gallon, that is still way too much for me to handle. So I'm very happy that we're going to have a third alternative. I just wish the HOA had been notified. I wouldn't have had to have the expense of buying my own cans at that point.
Thank you.
I'll look forward to the new ones.
You'll look forward. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jim Machelli. I live at 4315 South Victoria Way, Harrisburg. As you can see, I don't move around as good as I used to anymore. And I won't belabor the trash situation. I did like the comment that you're getting the 30 gallon can or 32 gallon. I have that. I also, similar to that young lady, I have that can. It meets every requirement for the trash. It has lid, it can be picked up. I have it on my back porch because I can't use it. Every Thursday night, I have to back a car out of my garage, move the cans down to the bottom of the driveway, which I'm really looking forward to in January and February. And then the next morning, reverse the process, put the cans in, back the car in. I'm glad to hear we're going to get the smallest cans between the 2XL and the XL. They don't work for me. And I thank Mr. Manero, I believe. If you can make this happen, that we can use the cans we already have, you're more than welcome to give the large can I have to someone else. That would be wonderful. If you can make that happen, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Pete Wambach. I'm at 4309 Stone Lake Court, Harrisburg. Trash cans have been an abomination. When I used to represent the city of Harrisburg as a member of the state legislature, bottom line was, we didn't have community given trash cans. Now you go down any street in the city of Harrisburg, and it's horrible. Everybody has a trash can in front of their house, they're overflowing, things are dropping out of them and everything else. I've been a member now of your community for probably the last 25 years, 20 years anyhow. And I appreciated the fact that you have a problem. You, you folks are on the firing line, you're in local government, okay? I was a step beyond that, okay? But I have to say that I'm a little shocked that due diligence wasn't paid to these discussions with all of the bidders that came through. Maybe you should have moved it back six months before you started the bid process, so you knew where everything was. Mr. Zumas mentioned that he learned more from our representative of our community tonight than he did from Penn Waste. And the promises that, that people make, you know, when the promises aren't kept, they're lies. That's what they are. I put on, I was put on the list for a small, smaller trash cans because my son, when he comes and visits me, he parks down on the street now because he can't get into the garage, because I have my trash cans there. If I know he's coming, I move them out, because he recently had hip surgery. And that incline into my house is a problem for him. I have friends that come in from out of state, or out of, out of city, I should say, that visit for, for some time. I have to put my trash cans on the porch. It's against the policy of the HOA. Sue mentioned that she has hers under her, under her deck. I walked my dog this morning. I can see them. They're not out of sight. They're stuffed under her deck. Why, why does she have to do that? I think she has to do that because due diligence wasn't paid. And I say this too. My actions, in my political life, I owned up to them. And I have to say, and I hate to say this, because there's a few members of your board that are good friends of mine, okay? But I have to say this, I don't think you owned up to it when it first came out. I got a newsletter or some kind of circular that said, I think it was from your manager, that, you know, Hummels Town and Hershey went up this percentage, we went up this percentage, you know, I think it was Dauphin went up a certain percentage, we're only going up this percentage. It didn't come from you. We didn't elect a township manager, or whoever wrote the letter. We elected you. Why didn't you folks sign that information to your citizens? That's what I don't understand. I called to get on the list, based on the newsletter, we're gonna have the small cans ready in September. Fantastic. I put up with them, I think, for a month and a half. I'll put up with the problem. September comes, I call. I'm on the list. Did you get the trash cans yet? No, I don't think they've been ordered yet, sir, but, but you are on the list. I noticed you're on the list. Well, when can we expect them? Maybe late October, early November. Okay, you wait a little longer. I make another call. And you confirmed it tonight. It's got to be into next year when we get these trash cans. I only admonish you for this. Take the time and do due diligence. Trash selection is a tough process today. I understand that. All costs are going up. I don't envy you. I applaud you actually for the job you do on your level. But you know, take the time that you can scope it out, you can do the timeline on how long these things take, and make the right decision from the beginning, and hold, hold the successor bidder to their promises. If they were going to supply smaller cans, so be it. I heard tonight, there's 16,000 homes in this community. 90% people are going to keep them. Can I ask you a question? What are you going to do, if my math serves me correctly, what are you going to do with 3,200 trash cans? That you're going to get back from recycled and regular trash cans? What are you going to do with $3,200?
I have a spare.
And you're gonna say, well...
No, actually, we, I can answer that. We have them in a warehouse, and as, as natural wear and tear causes cans to break, wheels fall off, something else happens to them, then we switch out and replace them. So they're there.
Mr. Henry, in all due respect, you're going to have a warehouse that's going to hold 3,200 trash cans, waiting for a wheel to fall off one of them?
Well...
It's a five-year contract.
What's the rent on that going to be? And I know this is a taxpayer problem, because we're going to pay the bill. Penn Waste isn't going to absorb them back. They have our names on them.
So what would you have proposed that we do? I mean, Penn Waste does this.
I, I already told you, Mr. Henry. I said you should have had due diligence to start this contract process a lot earlier than you did.
First of all, you're absolutely, you are absolutely wrong about that. There was a lot of due diligence that was done. Our township manager spent months preparing the bid documents, met with the various potential bidders, refined the bid documents after he got input from them, and we went out to 80 different companies. So a lot of due diligence was done. And frankly, I resent you coming in here and suggesting that we didn't do due diligence on a prob, on a problem that we have been wrestling with for the last 10 months. A heck of a lot of due diligence went into it. Maybe you didn't see it, like when you were in the legislature. Yeah, everybody sees the vote you cast, but they don't see the committee meetings that you attended, and the amount of staff work that went into it, and the amount of study that you put into it. And I know, you were a diligent legislator, because we've known each other a long time. The same sort of due diligence went into what we did here. And...
Well, I'm, I'm sorry to, to have to disagree with you.
Well, then...
Only from the standpoint, I think if a timeline was created, sir...
No, it wasn't.
If I can talk...
You've got, you've exceeded your five minutes.
Well, I have a, I have a question for you too. One second. You've given other people latitude to go over there.
I've given you latitude too.
Okay.
It's okay. Well, let me ask you, and that'll give you an opportunity. Is it Wambach? I'm sorry, I don't know your last name. Because you're, you're in, you were in public policy. And, you know...
I'm wearing hearing aids, sir.
Okay. We, we, first of all, this is done every five years. And the last time we did this, not everyone was on this board, the manager wasn't here, that was a different world. They, we, we weren't doing a contract with the mechanical arm. It was a, the, the labor cost, it was, it was a different world. It was pre-CO. It was where the labor market got upended. It was a totally different world. We, we have 17,000, we, 90% of the people liked what they got. Others are trading down. And then we have this very small, but very important number of people who can't, this, even the 65s are no good. And we're going to make sure that we move forward and try to get some smaller ones from them. And it's going to happen. You're talking about the cans, it's hell dumb, like, were we not supposed to let, how are we, how are we gonna, how were we to know who wanted to trade down? We're going to end up with these extra cans. And you're talking about taxpayers and all.
Due diligence, a due diligence survey, sir.
No. Do you not think we thought of that? Do you not think we thought of that? You know how hard it is?
You didn't act on it. You may have thought about it.
Well, do you know how hard it is to get an accurate survey of 17,000 households? You're...
You may, you may have discovered that 10% of the returns, one of the smaller ones. I didn't say you were going to get 17,000 returns, but you could have done your due diligence to see the percentage of people that wanted to trade down.
No, don't, the woman I'm telling you is, we thought of that. And it's very hard to get, you know, 55,000 people in this township, to get an accurate survey, anything close to get, I'm sure you probably know on some level, to get people, A, to see a notice of the survey, B, to fill it out, respond, get back. What the survey we would have gotten would have been completely useless. I think you understand that.
You can extrapolate from your returns, what, what your percentage of people that are not going to take the bigger cans over the smaller cans.
Didn't have to extrapolate. Penn Waste has stood up this service in multiple, you know, dozens, if not hundreds, of municipalities around the Commonwealth. They know from their experience in doing this in municipality after municipality, what the percentages are going to be. And the percentages have within 1 or 2% been exactly what they told us they were going to be. So, and you got to realize too, the size of Lower Paxton Township and the number of households that have to be serviced, you know, it's, I think what they've managed to accomplish in a couple of months is actually rather remarkable. And, you know, did they get everybody, every can when they wanted it? No, they didn't. And I don't expect them to. But they've done a heck of a good job in getting most of it done. They're going to get all of it done. And we're going to go to smaller containers. And ultimately, everybody's going to get what size they want. If that's not good enough, sorry about that. It's just what it takes logistically to get it done.
Ultimately, we're going to get what we want. And I appreciate that. But it didn't have to be this long, sir.
Yes, it did.
And, and you know that.
No, I don't know that.
If your due diligence was done, it wouldn't have been this long.
I disagree with you. Due diligence was done, and we know exactly what we're doing.
And the only other thing I'll say is, the next time you do a change like this, as a board, sign the letter. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board? Because we have long agenda items, long agenda for tonight. Okay. Seeing no further, then we will move on to chairman and board member comments. Are there any chairman and board member comments?
Just let residents know that the board's been very busy the past week. We had two very important items that we were at. One of them was, we received a grant for $1.2 million from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, and that allowed us to do artificial intelligence adaptive signals on Route 39, which will, we are in collaborative with...
Why don't you pause for a minute, Mrs. Lindsay?
We are in collaborative with Sesquahanna Township on this, and this will include 12 intersections on Linglestown Road. So hopefully, this is going to help with the traffic. Also on Friday, we attended a cricket pitch, where we're going to be putting in a permanent cricket pitch over at Lingle Park. This was part of our master plan with our $6 million that we're putting into our park system. So we were there with the Bootneys community. They were the ones that had asked for the cricket pitch. And like I said, it came in with the master plan also. So the board has been, you haven't seen us for a couple of weeks, because we haven't had meetings, but we have been very busy and we are out in the community. So thank you.
Would anybody else like to comment? Seeing none, Mr. Manager. Do you have any managers' report?
Sir, I do not this evening. Thank you.
We have no items under old business, so we will move now to new business. We need to take action to appoint William Miller and Larry Wasser to the Greenway Committee. Both gentlemen are familiar to us, but if you'd like to just come to the podium so our television audience can see you and... Don't be shy. You're not normally shy.
It's not too late to change your mind.
I'm in it now.
Gentlemen, good to see you. You want to introduce yourself to the TV audience, if you would?
William Miller, longtime Lower Paxton Township resident. I just, I, you know how I feel about walkways and sidewalks. In fact, people are talking all the time about different things, even out on, on North Colonial now. So it's just the idea that you have the input and see what we can do to make it happen, you know, so people can have that experience.
Great. Thanks for volunteering.
Yes.
I love it.
Thank you. Mr. Wasser?
Good evening, folks. Larry Wasser, longtime Lower Paxton member. Sort of just like Bill, avid outdoors person, bicycling, hiking, you know, know the township really well. Glad I can help. Also have heavy involvement with the Capital Green Belt and also Harrisburg Bike Club. I volunteer for both of those people. And with the Capital Area Green Belt, I work closely with some of the other adjoining townships. So I kind of know what they do, and hopefully I can bring some of that input back to our board too.
Thank you, Mr. Wasser. And I would also like to mention that Larry is our TNR, Trap, Neuter and Return, volunteer for the township. So thank you, and thank you, Bill.
Thank you, gentlemen. So with that, do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Miller and Mr. Wasser to the Greenway Committee?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Welcome.
Now we need to take action on bids for emergency repairs to the wastewater, stormwater system contract. Mr. Gottschall?
Yes, sir. Members of the board, as it has done in the past, staff is recommending to the board this evening, action to award a contract taken, collected under the bid system. As you can see here, provided by Mr. Miller, a number of documents pertaining to this bid and contract. The township did receive three bids under this contract. The engineer's original cost estimate was $70,000. The low bid in, in the bid process came to $49,324. And that is Rogel Incorporated, with whom we've worked many years and, and had good interaction. And so at this time, it is in order for the board to award this contract to Rogel Incorporated in, in that amount of $49,324.
Board members, any questions?
Just hope we did our due diligence.
I trust that the staff has done due diligence.
Yes, sir.
I think they are very, very good at that.
Good.
Yes, sorry. I blame Mr. Weaver for this.
Okay, yes, he's not here to defend himself.
So as the board maybe, may remember quite well, and certainly the authority board does, the township has been in the process for a number of months now with CRW and the municipal partners to formally begin the process of negotiating a new inter-municipal agreement. And so in order to do that, this intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the municipal partners, the township, and, well, actually, just the municipal partners and the township will really provide the framework to commit to those negotiations. It also allows us as a group to hire a rate consultant and also allow for the appropriate funding of that consultant as well as our engineer in order that we can appropriately negotiate the best agreement for both parties.
Questions, board members? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve Amendment Number One to the ICA with the Municipal Partners CRW-IMA.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Now we need to take action to approve an application for payment Number Nine for the 2020 Lower Paxton Township Drainage Improvement Project. Again, Mr. Gottschall.
Yes, sir. Members of the board, this is a contract closeout as well as an application for payment. It is in order at this time for the board to approve application for payment Number Nine. This, again, closing out the 2020 Township Drainage Improvements Project, and the amount of this application for payment is $6,750. And again, at this time, then the board would finally close this contract out, and we're on to the next year.
All right. Again, any questions, board members? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve application for payment Number Nine in the amount of $6,050 for the 2020 Lower Paxton Township Drainage Improvement Project, and the amount of this application for payment is $6,750. And again, at this time, then the board would finally close this contract out, and we're on to the next year.
All right. Again, any questions, board members? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve application for payment Number Nine in the amount of $6,050 for the 2020 Lower Paxton Township Drainage Improvement Project.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. We need to take action to approve application for payment Number Two for the Forest Hills Park Improvement Projects, which are moving along quite well. We were out there over the weekend. That looks really nice. Yeah.
Looking good, sir. Yes, sir. So yes, this application for payment Number Two being in the amount of $177,357.13 to the contractor, SLC Excavating LLC. Again, this is the second application for payment on that project, as noted, sir.
Questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the application?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application for payment Number Two for the Forest Hills Park Improvement Project in the amount of $177,357.13 to SLC Excavating LLC.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. We now need to take action to adopt Ordinance 2023-07, this authorizing and establishing the adoption of a trust fund for township employees' post-retirement benefits. I think we're familiar with this, but Mr. Miller, would you like to add anything?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. As Andrew Gottschall had succinctly noted, this is a discussion of creation of a trust that we can take general fund monies to fund for collective bargaining agreement benefits for certain eligible retirees from the police department for a small window of time for healthcare services post-retirement. By creating the trust and contributing into the trust, it gives us a bit of ease with regards to more aggressively investing on a long-term basis. So hopefully that helps to resonate with tax savings over history with regards to contributing into the trust for these regular benefits paid.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance 2023-07?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we adopt Ordinance 2023-07, authorizing and establishing the adoption of a trust fund for township employees' post-retirement benefits.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this takes us to subdivision and land development, and we need to take action to approve the preliminary and final land development plan for F&amp;M Trust Bank. This located at 4775 Lingelstown Road, Plan 23-14. And, sir, if you'd give us your name and address and any comments you would like to make.
Sure. My name is Doug Gosick. I'm with Williams Site Civil, 2325 Passion Church Road, Harrisburg. We're the site engineers that have prepared the drawings and the application before you at this time. It's for a, a small F&amp;M branch located in the township, at southwest quadrant of the Fairway Lane, Lingelstown Road intersection. It's a site that's already developed, a site that was developed back in 1990, has two office buildings with infrastructure, parking, utilities, et cetera. That plan envisioned a third building at that time that was never constructed, and this bank is in the vicinity of that third building. It was shown on the original plan as an 11,000 square foot office building, as are the two existing buildings. We are proposing a, a bank with drive-through that contains roughly 1,800 square feet, just under 1,800 square feet. No real access changes to the site. Parking's in place. We'll just be making some minor modifications in the vicinity of the building to accommodate ADA requirements. Utilities are in close proximity to the pad. They'll be extended, and we will be adding a small stormwater management facility to bring that part of the site in the current compliance with your ordinance. So aside from that, more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
So I assume the bank will have dumpsters?
I assume they will. Yes, sir.
We can offer you a 32-gallon option.
Too small. You have six waiver requests, you had four administrative comments, and five general comments. Have you settled all those with the township?
We have. In fact, the HRG comments do not reflect a resubmission we made in late October. I'm confident at this point, all technical comments have been addressed to Jason's satisfaction.
Okay.
We'll just have to work through the administrative comments.
Okay. Staff, okay? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other comments or questions for the gentleman? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the preliminary and final land development plan for F&amp;M Trust Bank?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, that motion includes the waivers in as well, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Includes everything. Thank you for your patience this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess that brings us to payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority. Mr. Treasurer?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded.